Okay, we have a lot of items to cover tonight. And the first thing that we're doing here is our public hearing. So the items that are on our public hearing, we will have discussion on those and hear from those of you in the audience that are here to speak on those. And we'll go through each one of those and then at the end of that, we'll conclude and we'll open back up into our regular scheduled monthly meeting where we will be taking those up as action items. So we have to do this in two steps to be in compliance with Georgia state law. So we will handle that in the appropriate time, which is on the regular scheduled meeting agenda. So at this time, under old business, under our public hearing, number one, ordinance number 0-0218 amending part two, chapter one of the codes of the Walker County, Georgia, to comply with OCGA 361-29C placing jurisdiction for enforcement of county ordinances in the magistrate court of Walker County, Georgia, and correcting language regarding appellate review. And this is the second reading of that, and I have asked our county attorney, Matt Williamson, to expand and explain and summarize what we're doing here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very briefly, since this is the second reading, I'll try to make this a bit more succinct than it was at the last meeting. But the court's jurisdiction is its ability to hear certain cases. There are different types of jurisdiction. There's personal jurisdiction, which gives the court's ability to hear cases pertaining to particular people. And there's subject matter jurisdiction, which is a court's ability to hear specific issues. Sometimes subject matter jurisdiction can be confined to a particular court based on the particular type of issue. For example, if it's a case that involves purely an issue of equity, which is not exactly that there have been wrongs that are done, but there's some kind of unfairness, all of those cases go to the superior court. Amounts in controversy, so if there's a particular case that has $100,000 worth of damages that are in question, those cases only superior court has jurisdiction over. We undertook earlier this year to have our codes enforced, and part of that was to do some research over which courts have jurisdiction over our codes of ordinances. And what we found when we did the research was that the appropriate court of jurisdiction for ordinance violations is the magistrate court with some exceptions. The state court does retain jurisdiction over certain traffic cases and other types of offenses that specifically state this offense shall be tried in state court. However, the state court does retain the right to or the jurisdiction over appeals from magistrate court. So working our way through this jurisdiction and venue statute as it was handed out, section 113A jurisdiction for any and all citations for ordinance violations, civil actions to abate nuisances, or any other legal action or enforcement measures arising under this code or under any other county ordinance or regulation shall be in the magistrate court of Walker County before those cases were tried in state court or were handled in state court. And then going to section 114, which deals with appeals, unless otherwise specified by state law, any party wishing to appeal any decision of the magistrate court concerning an ordinance or any other provision of this code shall do so by certiorari to the superior court of Walker County, and such court applications shall specify any alleged errors of law or by fact by the magistrate court. So what can happen, I believe I misspoke, what can happen is if someone is charged in magistrate court and they want to have a jury trial, then the case becomes transferred to state court. However, the appeals are to the superior court. I believe I said state court without being correct. We have already, the prior statute gave what's called concurrent jurisdiction to magistrate court and to state court. Knowing that we were going to change the jurisdiction ordinance, instead of proceeding with cases that had already been filed in state court, we filed motions to transfer to magistrate court. And earlier this month, we tried 10, excuse me, not tried, we handled 10 cases in magistrate court, which was the first time in a long time that any of our animal code had been actually litigated in state court and enforced. Of those 10 cases that were handled, nine of the individuals actually came to court. We had a trial on one of those here, one of those cases. One person did not show up, and the other eight were either what's called a no-low plea, which means no contest, or were guilty pleas. So the county has now a front-to-back enforcement mechanism for our ordinances relating to animal control and animal care. If there are any questions about ordinance or about what we are trying to accomplish with the change, then I would be very happy to answer any questions.
Some additional comment on this. This has all been done and enacted and worked through in conjunction with both our state court and also our magistrate court. Our county attorney has met with those folks several times in the process of making sure we get this right and make sure everything is in compliance with state law. So they've all been super supportive and very eager to get this correction made where this dual jurisdiction was put in place by the previous administration with an ordinance change back in, was it 2007, I believe?
That's correct.
And Matt Williamson's research has found that to handle this properly, all of those cases need to first go to the magistrate court. And so this is just another of those things we're trying to clean up and get things moving. So as our code enforcement officers are out doing their job, they have the proper venue and the proper procedures and processes to follow to get these cases through the judicial system in the proper matters as they're intended. That was a challenge in the past, so we will get this moving forward. And as Matt's indicated, there was 10 cases that come up on the docket in the first of this month, and so we have a standing court date of, was it the first Monday or Tuesday of each month?
That's correct. I can't remember off the top of my head.
So either the first Monday or first Tuesday of every month, there is a standing date for any magistrate hearings for county ordinance citations to be heard.
Our next one is August 6th, so whatever that is, if it's Monday or Tuesday.
That way, the officers in the field know what date to put on the citation, so the party in violation can, will know that on the scene when the citation's written. So just trying to get all these processes and steps streamlined to make it function and flow properly. So this is really the last piece that we need, so we're not confusing our court system.
There is a bit of a backlog as well of cases that are still in the state court that we've filed motions for transfer, and it may take some time for us to work through the backlog.
Is there any questions or additional comments about this? Okay, hearing none. We will move to the second item, which is an ordinance number 0-0318 amendment to the Walker County soil erosion and sedimentation and pollution control ordinance, and this is also the second reading. And again, I'll defer to our county attorney to give just an overview of this ordinance change.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a, I don't, in the context of keeping ordinances up to date, one hesitates to use the word routine maintenance. But if that term could be applied to a situation involving ordinances, this would likely be one of them. The soil erosion and sedimentation and pollution control ordinance has to comply with Georgia law and the definitions that sometimes get changed year in and year out. And all this ordinance does is bring up to currency the definition section of our soil erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control ordinance, specifically section six, section 18.
So what we have here, we're just adopting what the state has done. So there's those two definitions there, as he indicated, which defines a certified professional in erosion and sedimentation. And then 18 is definition clarification of final stabilization. So that's the only two modifications. There's not any changes in the fee structure or procedures or anything of that nature for stormwater. This is just adopting what the state has done to get us in up to date with the state standards. Any questions or comments on this? Yes, Justin?
So were we already a local issuing authority before we got up to date with the state codes? Or does that have anything to do with the specific change?
What do you say, local issuing of?
When I looked online at the code, all I could find was that it was to certify a county as a local issuing authority, to do your own inspections and permitting and stuff like that within your jurisdiction.
Yeah, the county's been permitting for some time and doing inspections and also like retention ponds and things. And there is a compliance standard that we have to follow that EPD comes in and does periodic audits on. And so we have some folks through planning and zoning that work on that all year long to do those processes and stay up to date in compliance.
Thank you.
Sure, good question. Anything else on this one? Item number three is the second hearing application for rezon amendment of Jasper and Jeanette Joyner requests a partial rezon from A1 agriculture to R2 residential for properties located at 542 Worthington Gap Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, tax map 0-318-13. The first hearing was at the planning commission back on July the 19th. So this has been properly advertised in the paper, notices have been posted at the locations as required. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this request? Yes, ma'am, if you could come to the podium, please.
My name is Cyan Joyner, and I'm the daughter-in-law of Jasper and Jeanette Joyner. They are elderly, 86 and 87, and that is why they're requesting that this rezoning happen. They are looking to have someone who's living close by them now. They're wanting to sell them one acre of land to build a home on so that they can help oversee the property. They do have, I believe it's almost 79 acres, and they're not really in health to be able to take care of that, and they also need help taking care of themselves. So what we are asking is to rezon that one acre based on the hardship for them. Also, you know, it's not really anything that's their fault, it's just a matter of they need assistance. I did explain to the board, the zoning board, that there are, of the 37 properties on that road, 14 of them are zoned for residential. We feel like it's within the guidelines as far as the relationship of the parties wanting to build a home. They are within the fourth degree of kindred according to the law, we have shown that. Also have proof from the tax assessor's office that it will not hinder their agreement with the conservation of the property. So I feel like that we have proven that it is a hardship situation, but the zoning board chose to deny my request.
Okay.
And I do have some paperwork from the tax assessor's office if you'd like to see it.
Okay, yes, if you want. Okay. Yeah, Chris.
I would also like to add that they have lived in Walker County for 41 years, so you can imagine how much property taxes they pay. They just feel like that the county should be able to let them have the assistance they need when they need it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have for or against this request that would like to speak? Okay, Philip Cantrell is here tonight. He's our chairman of our planning and zoning board. Mr. Cantrell, would you like to make any comments on this request?
Yes. The, these folks came to us last week and asked for a rezon to an R2 so that they could just take one acre of land off this property. These folks that own this property has already divided it eight times. It is a piece of farmland, and what he would do is he'd build a house on it and peel off five or six acres at a time. And the property is zoned agriculture. The board did not feel like that we should change the zoning to residential. We feel like that this gentleman has got plenty of land, and if he actually needs someone to help him, he's 80 something years old, we feel like that deeding five acres off to keep it in consistency with the zoning would be the right thing to do. How they use the land, we don't care, you know? They can farm the other four and a half acres and live on a half acre, you know? But if it's transferred to someone else, then it would stay in the actual zone that it's in. And when we, when the zoning board changes this stuff, as I have said numerous times, people go away. Families break up, they get divorced, they die off, they do everything, but this land will stay there, and it will be transferred down to the next person. These people who live around there can have horses and dogs and cats and chickens and pigs and all of that, so you're putting someone in there that could be a potential problem to the people that's already zoned agriculture. So that's why the zoning board denied the zoning. We feel like five acres would be fair since they have that much land. You know, if the gentleman only had, you know, seven or eight acres, that would be one thing, but I think he's got 45, 50, 60 acres or something left in that piece of property.
Almost 78. No, almost 79, 78.918.
Okay. So we just felt like it wasn't good business for the county.
Okay.
May I respond to that?
Yes, go right ahead.
The property, I just want to make a correction, has not been divided eight times. There are five other properties that were divided at one time, two of them to his son, which is my husband, one of them to his grandson, and the other one to a family friend. So it's not like he's just trying to make a profit and sell this property off, he's just trying to keep his family close by.
So there has been five partial breakoffs over time?
Yes, sir, and I do have a map if you'd like to see that.
What size were those partials?
One of them is eight acres, that's where my son lives. One of them is eight and a half acres. One is three acres. One is one and a half, and the other is one. Some of those, those that are less than five acres, he built himself and then sold them to whoever he sold them to at that point. That's what we're going to do for less than five acres. Does that make sense?
So he built the houses and then sold the houses?
Yes, sir. He built, like, for instance, the three-acre lot. He built that house before my husband and I got married, and then when we got married, we bought it from him and paid for it. He built it himself out of his own pocket. He did that also with the eight and a half acres.
Okay.
The other thing is that I want to clarify, it is 78.91 acres that are left. The young couple that is wanting to build there do not want five acres, and the Joyners do not want to sell them five acres, they just want to keep them close so that they can help out.
Okay. Anything else to add?
Not really. I mean, I go right back to the same thing, that I feel like with someone with that much land, if they need someone, you know, and they're at that age, that five acres is not a big to do. And, you know, I mean, I don't want to make it a cliche or anything, but you know, if you want to live on one acre, I feel like you ought to live in a subdivision, not in agriculture land.
Okay. Anyone else in the room have anything to add for or against this request on this hearing? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the next item under new business. This is a second hearing application for rezoning. MB and Yvonne P. Case request a rezon from C1 commercial to R2 residential for property located at 6058 and 6060 Highway 193, Flintstone, Georgia, 30725, tax map 0-036-0598. The first hearing at the planning commission meeting was on July the 19th of 2018. Is there anyone here that is to speak on this request? Anyone for or against to speak on this request? Okay, Mr. Cantrell, anything from the planning commission?
The planning commission voted unanimously to turn down the request on the property. There's a lot of issues there that happened over the years with that piece of property, but anyway, it was voted down unanimously not to rezon.
Okay, anyone in the audience have anything to add to this? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move forward. Let officially adjourn our, adjournment of our public hearing on these items. We will open up into our regular scheduled meeting on Thursday, July the 26th. This immediately follows our public hearing that started at 6 o'clock. We've already had our invocation and pledged our flags. In your packet, we have approval of the minutes from our public hearing and regular meeting that was on July the 12th. So those of you that received a package, or this information is also available online in a complete form on our website. Does anyone that has reviewed these minutes see any corrections or changes that we need to make before we sign these into the record on the public hearing from July 12, 2018? Hearing none, we'll sign these to move these into the record. Next in your packet will be the regular scheduled meeting from also on July 12th. Does anyone have any corrections or anything to add to these minutes before we put these into the record? Hearing none, we'll sign these into the record. Okay, at this time, under old business, and the reason this one is listed as old business is because it was tabled at a prior meeting, so this had to be brought back up. So item number one, application for rezoning amendment to Jasper and Jeanette Joyner request a partial rezon from A1 agriculture to R2 residential for property located at 542 Worthington Gap Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30738, tax map 0-318-013. The planning commission's recommendation is to deny this request. I spent some time earlier reviewing this information, and we have been working very hard under my administration to be consistent and to do things in conjunction and compliance with the direction and the spirit of our ordinances and codes that we have in place. In this particular situation, there is adequate land, as the zoning chairman pointed out, where if the family so desired to split off a portion of that land, they would have, without any problem from a land standpoint, to be able to divide off that land in a five-acre tract, and then they could build a house or use for farming or accommodation and do as they please. So at this time, to be consistent and be conforming with our ordinances of the five-acre minimum in an agriculture area, I'm going to deny this request as a recommendation of the planning. And you all would still have the ability, if you wanted to go back and do five acres and have that go back through the process of the zoning at that time. Okay, under new business, consideration of the application for rezon of MB and Yvonne P. Case request a rezon from C1 commercial to R2 residential for property located at 6058 and 6060 Highway 193, Flintstone, Georgia, tax map 0-036-0598. Planning commission's recommendation is to deny this request. As Mr. Cantrell did indicate, there was no one here to speak on this tonight. This is a situation, it's a pretty big mess, unfortunately. The owners of this property had already converted commercial property into residential without going through the proper permitting and approval process. And so this was brought to our attention by a citizen complaint. The property was not properly set up for residential, the zoning wasn't proper, and we understand there's probably issues with the size of the septic system and so forth. So it's not in the best interest of our county or the community or the people surrounding that property to allow this zoning to be changed. They're going to have to get this back in compliance with the ordinances for a C1 property and quit using that property for residential use. So in concurrence with the planning commission, we're going to deny this rezon request. We will work with the property owners and with the tenants and give them a period of time to get into compliance through our codes office. We feel like maybe they can accomplish that within at least a 60-day window. We will work with them the best of our ability and give them time to work through that process. Okay, we have consideration of the ordinance number 0-0218 amending part two, chapter one of the code, the Walker County, Georgia, to comply with OCGA 36-1-29C placing jurisdiction for the enforcement of county ordinances in the magistrate court of Walker County, Georgia, and correcting language regarding appellate review. This is our second public hearing on this. Our county attorney's done an excellent job of explaining this. We've had time for public comment, there's not been any questions, comments, or concerns raised on this. Everyone that has been involved in this ordinance totally agrees that we're doing the right thing, and this gets us in 100% compliance with state law, and we want to be there. And so we're going to go ahead and adopt this ordinance into our, into our records so we can fully implement this ordinance. Also, all of our ordinances have to be attested and witnessed by our clerks, so Rebecca will Okay, our next one is consideration of ordinance number 0-0318 amendment to the Walker County soil erosion and sedimentation and pollution control ordinance. solar erosion and sedimentation and pollution control ordinance. Again, there's not been any additional comment or concern or question. We are simply getting aligned with the state statute, so therefore we'll sign this and approve this into our record. Also has to be attested by the clerk. Okay, resolution R-021-18, a resolution authorizing a referendum to allow sales on Sunday of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits by the drink. So I will ask our county attorney if he will first read this resolution. We will have some open discussion about this resolution and explain the process and the procedures, where our citizens will be able to vote on this referendum in the November 2018 election if we move forward this resolution tonight. So Matt Williams?
You, you did say R-21, that one first?
Yes, R-2118.
Okay. Whereas, sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits by the drink are currently lawful within the unincorporated area of Walker County, and whereas, sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits by the drink are currently subject to regulation on Mondays through Saturdays in the unincorporated area of Walker County by the governing authority of Walker County, and whereas, OCGA section 3-3-7 subsection J authorizes the governing authority of a county to allow sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits by the drink on Sundays between the hours of 11:00 AM and 12:00 midnight if such sales are approved by voter referendum. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, that the county clerk is hereby authorized and directed to transmit this resolution to the election superintendent to issue the call for a voter referendum for the purpose of submitting to the voters of the county the question of authorizing Sunday sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits by the drink between the hours of 11:00 AM and 12:00 midnight. Be it further resolved that upon receipt of this resolution, the election superintendent shall issue the call and shall conduct the election in the manner prescribed by OCGA section 21-2-540. Be it further resolved that the election superintendent shall cause the date and purpose of the election to be published once a week for four weeks immediately preceding the date of the election in the original organ of the county. Be it further resolved that the election superintendent shall cause the following language to be written or printed on the ballot. Shall the governing authority of Walker County be authorized to permit and regulate Sunday sales of distilled spirits or alcoholic beverages for purposes, for beverage purposes by the drink, yes or no? Be it further resolved that upon the passage of the Sunday sales referendum, the governing authority of Walker County shall be authorized to permit and regulate sales by the drink of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits on Sundays between the hours of 11:00 AM and 12:00 midnight, effective December 1st, 2018, and witness whereof this resolution has been duly adopted by the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, on the 26th of July, 2018. In, earlier this year, the Georgia General Assembly passed Senate Bill 17, and it was signed into law by the governor. That bill gives counties who already regulate by the drink sales the opportunity to expand to Sunday sales through a referendum, as the resolution mentioned. In order for us to comply with the applicable deadlines that was necessary to give the election superintendent the time to prepare the ballot before November, we had to take action on this item today. The, when I spoke to her originally, the deadline for her to actually turn everything in was tomorrow. Subsequently, she's told me that it's actually August 2nd, which is still before our next regular scheduled meeting. So we have to, to take this action now in order for us to have the opportunity to do it by the next general election. We use this Senate bill as an opportunity to look, as we have been for a lot of other areas of our ordinances, to look at our ordinances and those of our municipalities concerning regulation of alcohol. As the resolution says, the county, like all city, all of our cities, allows beer and wine by the package and by the drink sales on Monday through Saturday. Chickamauga and Rossville currently allow for packaged sales of beer and wine on Sunday. The county and all municipalities except Lafayette allow distilled spirit sales by the drink Monday through Sa- Saturday. And incidentally, the city of Lafayette is across the street right now putting this same issue up on its own city referendum. So consistent with that and the significant number of requests that we have gotten from the public to take this issue up, I undertook to research the procedure for bringing forth referendums on each of the counties' remaining available alcohol excise tax sources, and there are four of them. One is Sunday beer and wine sales by the package, two, Sunday alcohol sales by the drink, three, distilled spirits by the package, and four, Sunday distilled spirits, sales by the package. Georgia law treats each of those four issues very separately when it comes to what is required to put those up for a vote. For Sunday beer and wine sales by the package and Sunday alcohol sales by the drink, the governing authority of the county has the ability to bring that issue to a referendum. This resolution and the one that follows it covers those two areas. Regarding distilled spirits by the package, Georgia law specifically, OCGA section 3-4-41, requires that a petition signed by 35% of registered voters in the county to bring the issue to a referendum. And in order to consider the question of whether we should have Sunday distilled package sales, naturally, we have to take up whether we can regulate distilled spirit package sales at all before we can proceed to that question. So we have only undertaken Sunday beer and wine sales by the package on the referendum and Sunday alcohol sales by the drink. Our economic and community development director has more information on how this issue may impact other areas and objectives, so I'll turn it over to Rob.
Thank you, Matt. I want to share the economies of this question. This is really the, for me, this is something that perhaps we could have undertaken a long time ago. I think its time has come. It's revenues that can be captured here in our county and not given away to other places, just to put it bluntly, and that's exactly what we're doing right now. We currently collect about $260,000 a year in taxes related to alcohol activity. Okay. $260,000 currently. So let's say, when you look at alcohol or soft drinks, any activity like that, the weekend sales are almost everything. When you take Saturday and Sunday and any of the consumer type items like that, the absence of opportunity for retailers on Sunday is significant. So let's just be conservative and just say, let's say that passing this would result in a 20% increase. That's about $50,000, and that's very good. But the real, the real important thing here is each dollar that we're earning, these are dollars that we're capturing that are not resulting in the requirement of increased property taxes. And this is what this administration has been committed to from the very start, and we will continue to do that, find ways to generate revenue that does not include, does not include increasing the burden on taxpayers. If someone wants to engage in a behavior during the weekend or an activity, that's a decision for an individual to make. That's not a decision for a government to make. But we do want to put this forward to the people to decide for themselves if they want to capture this revenue for our own good or send it somewhere else.
I'll also bring in a second. Hold on, hold on, we'll let y'all speak in a moment.
I want to talk about high-end dining. I hear a lot just in day-to-day life, I'm always hearing, why don't we have high-end dining? Well, in my past life, I'm coming, it's from the soft drink world, not the alcohol world. However, this is consistent. High-end restaurants do not come to places where they do not have the ability to offer their full menu on the weekends when people travel and people visit. So as we continue to grow as a community and expand and look forward instead of looking backwards, these are the kind of things that matter. I'm not going to call any particular restaurant company or retailer, I'm not going to call it by name. I think you know the types of restaurants and dining establishments we're talking about that we would love to have here. The inability to sell beverages on a Sunday while NFL games are going on is not attractive to any retailer. They're not going to do it. And I think also when, as we're looking at Walker Rocks and we're increasing tourism, I just want you to think about, we're bringing people with expendable income into our community. And they have an expectation, as do our current residents, have an expectation of a variety of options to choose from. If they want to go to a place that enjoys a beer after a hike, they're going to go to that place. They're going to do it here, or they're going to go somewhere else and do it. If they do not enjoy that, they are going to choose from a, the great assortment we have in our county today. It does not have that offering, but it's variety, my friends. As we move forward, it's variety. So I just wanted to share some of the economic aspects to this while Matt so ably communicated the actual logistics of it. So that's all, that's what I have for now, Matt.
Good. Y'all have anything else, Matt? Additionally on this, back during the 2016 campaign, I brought out the fact that Mountain Co. Farms, which is owned and operated by county government, was selling alcohol beverages, and totally disagreed that the county should be in the business of selling alcohol, that the county should only be in the business of taxing of alcohol sales. So we removed all the alcohol out of Mountain Co. Farms from a county perspective. If someone's having an event or party or whatever, they can bring in the alcohol that they choose. But as far as the county being responsible to manage those sales, we got out of that business because the county has no business in that business. But this is the United States of America where it's a free country for people to be able to make those freedom choices that they want to make. It's, it's the proper form for the governing body or the commissioner's office to allow the citizens to vote up or down this issue. So simply what this resolution does is give you, the citizens, the people of Walker County, the ability to make the decision if this needs to go and be passed into Walker County. I don't make that decision. The only decision that I have is to give you the decision. And that's simply what we want to do, to be open and transparent and be responsive to government, be a responsive government, and listening to the people and those that are requesting for this to be put on the ballot. So I'm simply honoring those requests that has been brought to our attention of, of individuals and establishments that want to see this brought forward and be put on the ballot for the citizens to make that decision. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak on this topic, if you could make your way up to the front podium, it will allow you to speak how you, how you feel about this issue.
Commissioner, while they're making their way up, I want to add, just for informational purposes, I spoke to each of the existing businesses now in the county and asked their opinion because they have been, they have been sending us correspondence saying, hey, we need help here. I spoke to them before this meeting, and every one of them, 100% of those I spoke to said, this will have a significant positive impact on the economies of my business. That's from each of the current owners of restaurants. Excuse me, Mr. Upshaw, you'll speak, state your name and get the floor.
My name is Eddie Upshaw, and I live in Chickamauga, Georgia. And I appreciate you gentlemen taking this up and offering to assist in this resolution. I was hoping that y'all could just go ahead and do it without the resolution. But I respect everybody's opinion, and I, I really don't think it's a moral issue. I think it's a economic issue. I think it would be diverse and fair for the stores and things in the county to have the same opportunity as one in the municipalities. I, I'm not a heavy beer drinker, I'm not a big beer drinker, but when I get to church on Sundays, I stop at this store at the corner of 193 and 136. There's people coming in here from all over the country. They're coming in on bikes, they're coming out to go to the mountain. They, and the guys constantly tell them, we don't sell beer on Sundays. I don't, I'm, I'm an advocate for, for poor people, old people, veterans, and I try to do everything I can to help it. I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be a moral issue. I don't think it would be, I honestly don't think it would. I think it would benefit our county that we could move forward with this resolution, and I appreciate you, Commissioner, and you guys, and our members working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you state your name, please?
My name's Tony Jackson, and my first question is, what is the difference in this resolution and the one that was voted down in 2014 that was put before the people for the same thing that was voted down? And now...
Wasn't aware that anything was voted down. We would have...
I think that the, the difference here would be that the Senate Bill 17, as I referenced earlier, extended the amount of time for Sunday sales. And when they changed that statute, I believe they changed the verbiage of the ballot question, because I did go back and look at the ballot question, and I cannot recall off the top of my head what...
I don't have it. I wished I had it in front of me so I could...
What, what the verbiage was?
But it was Sunday alcohol sales and liquor by the drink in Walker County.
But I, I...
And it was voted down.
I believe that there were some slight distinctions between the verbiage of the 2014 ballot question and this one. And I did go and I did look at the election superintendent's office, and I would encourage you to do the same, but, but they are slightly different than, than...
So it wouldn't be the sales, it would just be the time that it's allowed to sell?
Well, it's, it's...
Just from what we're talking about?
It's correct. It's, it's both the sale, this is both the sale and an expanded amount of time for it to be sold, whereas that one only was the sales between, for example, that one, I believe, would have allowed between 12:00 a.m. or 12:00 PM and mid, 12:00 midnight, and this is 11:00 AM and 12:00 midnight.
Okay, and if this is voted down, what's the process? I'm confused on why it was voted down in '14 and then it's brought up again in '18. And if it's voted down this time, when's it going to be brought up again? Because I understand your point on the restaurants and stuff, but on the defense of that, we don't even have a restaurant in Lafayette that we could go in the morning, sit down, and eat eggs and biscuit and drink. Don't happen. It's not here. You can't, you can go to Hardest, but you can't go to a restaurant and sit down and eat biscuit and drink and eggs. If you go to town on Friday nights, there's nobody in town. Texas Roadhouse, Long Island, they're not coming to Lafayette just because it's biased, because the people's not here. Nobody drives from Chattanooga to Lafayette to eat a steak when there's nothing to do here. But I'm broken because we voted this down in '14, and now it's come back up again in '18. And that's where I'm confused is why it is, I mean, if it's voted down again, can we just bring it up again next year? Or if it is biased, to those of us that don't want it biased, how can we get it voted to take it back down?
I believe, this is also going to be based on, from what I've read, there are restrictions on the amount of time between when these issues can be considered.
Right.
on the amount of time between when these issues can be considered. I believe that because of that distinction that was created by Senate Bill 17, that it's, the way that the statute that that bill amended is worded, it states, notwithstanding any other provision of law, this is the process by which counties which already allow by-the-drink sales have to follow. So, because of that verbiage, that creates the opportunity for it to be reconsidered. If it fails, there is a time limit, and I'm not sure what it is, but I am very, very confident there is a time limit over when it could be reconsidered.
Because there's municipalities and counties around us that spice this same stuff and they don't have the business. You know, Lally's spiced this and they got a liquor store. That's what they got. They don't have restaurants.
Well, this is different.
I understand that, sir. But I promise you, I do, but I'm just, I mean, we voted this down in '14 and now it's back again in '18.
Also, I want to, I want to ask a clarifying question because of some comments that you've made. This would not affect the city of Lafayette. This would affect the unincorporated areas of the county.
I understand.
So, the city of Lafayette is taking this issue...
But this is the biggest municipality in the county.
No.
They're not going to build a fancy restaurant in Chickamauga. They're not going to build one in Catley.
But if there's like some expansion out of St. Elmo into the northern end of the unincorporated area of Walker County, that, that might be an opportunity.
And I'm like Mr. Upshaw, I respect everybody's opinion. Everybody's got a right. I'm just against it, but I'm against alcohol sales, period. I just think it would be beyond...
Yes, sir.
But I understand everybody's got a right to their opinion. But that was my confusion is why it was voted down four years ago and it's back again. Is that going to be the, if it voted down this time, is it going to be brought up again? Or when does it go away? We don't fool with it no more? Or does it change per administration?
I would think as a practical matter, if you bring something that an administration believes in and you bring it before the people and the people agree, then you wholeheartedly and enthusiastically proceed and capture that revenue. If people decline, then from, as a practical matter...
Yes, sir.
It would probably be until someone else is up here and wants to see if the public will, if such, that they want to capture that revenue now.
So, at least per administration then?
Well, no, I'm not saying that in an official sense. I'm saying as a practical matter, in my opinion, you wouldn't just keep, you know, we represent you.
We want to do what the majority of the people want to vote to do.
Well, the majority of the people's done voted it down.
Well, if that happened, if that happened four years ago, we are getting requests now to put it on the ballot.
There are a lot of things that got voted down years ago that now we have made a lot of progress.
Like they voted in a year ago, but we're glad they're here now. I heard of that a hundred percent. Trust me on that. I am a property owner and I appreciate what you're doing. I'm not that type of person, but I just stand on some principles and that was my confusion is why, because I worked hard the last time of getting it voted down, of telling people to get out and vote and vote against it. And if you pass this resolution, it's going to come out and do it. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else that'd like to speak on this issue? Yes, Josh.
There are really only a couple of things. As far as the why it was not voted on 2014 and we're bringing it up again, part of that is we have people that are just now voting age that also want to say they want their chance to put in their answer that may not have been able to vote then. And a lot of like with the Walker Rocks and different things like that, it is trying to get more people to come down here. And the more pessimistic we feel about people coming down here and saying that certain places would never come here, that possibly could be part of the reason that they aren't. The more people that give it a chance, give it a shot and be more open-minded to new people and new experiences coming down here, then we'll increase our youth and our population and our possibilities. That was pretty much all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? For or against, either way, doesn't matter, anything on this particular topic? Anyone at all?
Okay. As I stated earlier, I think it's my duty as the commissioner to give the citizens the opportunity to vote what they want. It's not my decision to make whether or not the citizens should not be able to vote on it. So, I feel like to run a professional office and to be transparent and to honor the request of the citizens and to give people the opportunity to vote. I'm going to go ahead and approve this resolution and sign this into our record and allow the election board to move forward in this election process. This will be attested by our clerk. Next item is Resolution R-022-18, a resolution authorizing a referendum to allow package sales on Sunday by retailers of packaged malt beverages and wine. So, Matt, if you again will read Resolution R-22-18.
Yes, sir. Resolution authorizing a referendum to allow package sales on Sunday by retailers of packaged malt beverages and wine, whereas package sales of malt beverages and wine by retailers are currently lawful within the unincorporated area of Walker County, and whereas sales of malt beverages and wine by retailers are currently subject to regulation on Mondays through Saturdays in the unincorporated area of Walker County by the governing authority of Walker County. And whereas OCGA Section 3-3-7P authorizes the governing authority of the county to allow package sales by retailers of malt beverages and wine on Sundays between the hours of 12:30 PM and 11:30 PM if such sales are approved by voter referendum. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, that the county clerk is hereby authorized and directed to transmit this resolution to the election superintendent to issue the call for a voter referendum for the purpose of submitting to the voters of the county the question of authorizing Sunday package sales by retailers of malt beverages and wine between the hours of 12:30 PM and 11:30 PM. Be it further resolved that upon receipt of this resolution, the election superintendent shall issue the call and shall conduct the election in the manner prescribed by OCGA Section 21-2-540. Be it further resolved that the election superintendent shall cause the date and purpose of the election to be published once a week for four weeks immediately preceding the date of the election in the official organ of the county. Be it further resolved that the election superintendent shall cause the following language to be written or printed on the ballot, shall the governing authority of Walker County be authorized to permit and regulate package sales by retailers of malt beverages and wine on Sundays between the hours of 12:30 PM and 11:30 PM? Yes or no? Be it further resolved that upon passage of the Sunday sales, package sales referendum, the governing authority of Walker County shall be authorized to permit and regulate package sales by retailers of malt beverages and wine on Sundays between the hours of 12:30 PM and 11:30 PM effective December 1st, 2018, and witness whereof this resolution has been duly adopted by the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia on the 26th day of July, 2018. Again, much of the overlap on the last resolution, the city of Chickamauga already allows for this and I believe Rossville also is, yes, Rossville also allows that. So, this would bring the county into line with Chickamauga and Rossville's current state of ordinances and might clarify or help to clarify some of the inconsistencies with those and all the other reasons for why we considered the last resolution applying to this one as well.
Anything else, Rob? Now, I think maybe just to clarify the distinction in the two resolutions, if anyone's sitting there going, wait a minute, what's the difference? The one applied to restaurants by the drink, this applies to convenience stores, grocery stores, drugstores by the package. So, this, this would be, say, the new food city in Mission Ridge would not, at this time, be able to sell on Sundays with the passage of this referendum. They would have the ability to do that, not to the exclusion of anyone else. I'm just using that as an example of an unincorporated retailer.
Correct. And the MapCo in Rock Springs would be subject to the same legal situation as the Tider Martin Chickamauga or the MapCo in Rossville.
Yeah. Yeah, this has caused quite some confusion, especially for people visiting the area when they can go a mile or two down the road and they can purchase and then a mile or two in the other direction, they cannot purchase. And so, there's a lot of inconsistency and confusion that they're causing. And so, this again gives the citizens the opportunity to vote this up or down and the majority will speak of what the citizens of Walker County want to see going forward. Anyone like to speak on this?
Thank you, Detective Mann. I also approve this resolution and I think, I think this is the fair and the right way to do it because I don't think a store should be penalized, as we call they in Rock Springs. I don't think that should be penalized and, and they can't have their resources too. So, I appreciate y'all doing this and making it fair and a level playing field for the entire county. So, thank you for doing it, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And Walker Rocks.
Yes, sir. It truly does.
Anyone else like to speak? Please state your name if you would.
Yes. My name is Stacy Suttel and I approve of the resolution. I think people have the opportunity to do as they choose, as long as they do it in a safe way, an environment home. Lafayette hasn't been, hadn't happened to be able to grow lately and with new rules and other restaurants, people want to come to the supermarket. People will flourish, but to keep a negative mindset about the community, it will, like she said, attract other people coming in this area. I approve of the resolution and how it goes forward.
Thank you, Mr. Suttel. Anyone else? Regardless of your viewpoint or opinion, we'd like to hear from you.
Commissioner, if I may say, one other thing that is not a part of this tonight, and Matt talked about this earlier, but I hear a lot of people just asking about the package bottle sales. And so, I imagine there's going to be some confusion later. Well, what about that part? Why don't you do that? And Matt did describe earlier, I want to just clarify for everyone, the package stores, that is a different process and requires a 35% petition within any municipality. It can be done, but that would be more of an organic citizen-led, if a citizen, if someone wants to do that, a citizen will organize 35% of a municipality, be it the county or any city, and bring that to us, then we would make a consideration from that. But I just want to go ahead and say now to avoid further confusion later that that's one.
While we're avoiding confusion, they actually would not bring it to us. They would take it to Danielle Montgomery themselves.
There you go.
And the county would have no discretion one way or the other. If 35% of the registered voters signed the petition and took it to the election superintendent, it would be subject to the same vetting requirements of many other types of campaigns that require petitions. And then, once Danielle vetted through all of the people who had signed the petition to make sure they were qualified voters, it would at that point be triggered, a referendum would be triggered, and the verbiage that would be put on the ballot would be dictated by state laws. There would be no action that we would take at all in that regard.
Thank you for that.
Anyone else?
And that was for liquor stores and such packaged deals.
Yes. Okay. Again, to allow the voters to be able to vote on this, I'm going to go ahead and approve this resolution and give the voters the opportunity in the election in November to make this This will be attested by our clerk. Okay. Item number six, Resolution R-23-18, a resolution authorizing volunteers and elected officials to be covered by the ACCG, which stands for the Association of County Commissioners Group Self-Inured Work Comp Fund, repealing resolution of part of resolution in conflict and for other purposes. So, Matt, keeping you busy tonight. You will talk about this resolution and the need for this.
Certainly. The resolution authorizing volunteers and elected officials to be covered by the ACCG Group Self-Inurance Workers' Compensation Fund, repealing resolutions for parts of resolutions in conflict and for other purposes, be it hereby resolved by the self-commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, Section 1, volunteer firefighters, volunteer law enforcement personnel that are post-certified, volunteer members or workers of an emergency management or civil defense organization, emergency medical service or rescue organization, and any person certified by the Department of Human Resources or the composite State Board of Medical Examiners and registered with any county of this state as a medical first responder for any volunteer first responder services rendered in such capacity and/or elected county officers and elected members of the governing authority of Walker County shall be covered under the workers' compensation laws of the state of Georgia. Section 2, all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herein are repealed. Our human resources director, who is not present tonight, brought to our attention that these individuals are not covered under the workers' compensation that's provided by ACCG and that we needed to pass this resolution in order to extend that to them. And, Commissioner, I think you can address the policy decision that lay behind making that.
The association that provides us the workers' comp, they give each local governing authority to determine if they want to cover volunteers. We love our volunteers. We want to take good care of them and if they are injured in any way while they're providing services for the county, whether it be through law enforcement or volunteers, we want to make sure that they're taken care of. And so, it was just recently brought to our attention that there was some confusion in the past and this had not been taken care of. So, we've been very fortunate that we've not had an incident that has caused a problem, but we want to do the right thing and again, continue to clean up these housekeeping items and to make sure that all of the appropriate people are covered. So, the association said in order for this to be done and to be added, that we needed to make this an item of record and put in our business and have this in a public meeting and give them documentation and proof that this is taking place. So, any question or comment about this resolution? Hearing that, we'll sign this into the record so we can make sure our volunteers and all of our elected officials are covered when they're in the line of duty for Walker County. Okay. One more resolution. Resolution R-24-18, a resolution to declare property of the Walker County District Attorney unserviceable surplus and remove from the county inventory, see attached listing Exhibit A. This is something that's becoming pretty common. We've got some government, county departments, and also some of our extended partners that work through the commissioner's office that are working through some old stuff. And I'll just read this letter from our district attorney, Buzz Franklin. This was addressed to myself, dated July 20th, 2018. Says, please see the attached list as my request for the described property to be declared as surplus. We are requesting to destroy these items. Most are office equipment that are worn out or beyond repair. Some are not usable due to water and mold damage from storage in the basement. The below-described items were purchased by the district attorney's office and are no longer being used. So, all county items have to be kept, kept an inventory of, and if those are disposed of, those have to come before the governing body or the commissioner's meeting and have to be listed out in summary and social security numbers and so forth attached. Many times, at that point, the county would take these items... Many times at that point, the county would take these items and would be able to place these on govdeals.com and try to auction them off that way. Historically, the county many years has done an annual auction, had a third-party auctioneer come in and auctioned these off. Our items can be disposed of by secret bid and brought before a meeting and put on the agenda, or if they are unserviceable or unusable or damaged, they can be declared as unserviceable and actually sent and disposed of the proper way. Most often is the local county landfill. As Mr. Franklin mentioned in his letter, these items have all been kept under their office in a very dark, wet, damp basement that has been there for quite some years. And so these items are actually become hazardous to some degree with the amount of mold that is built up on these items. So none of these items are usable. I know when you see computers and printers and chairs and things, but these items were not properly stored and so therefore, all these items are going to have to be destroyed and not serviceable. So I'm going to just sign this resolution order unless anyone has any question or comment about this. This is standard practice and what Georgia law requires us to do to dispose of any property that's owned by local government properly. This time, that ends our regular scheduled meeting and as always, we will open up the floor for any discussion that anyone would like to bring at this time in this public meeting on any topic relating or contained to county government. So anybody has anything that they would like to address in this meeting, in this public forum, dealing with county government, we'd love to hear from you at this time. If you'd like to come forward to the podium. Anyone got anything they want to add to the meeting tonight?
I want to start on the chicken factory.
Okay. The question-
Do you want to come up here to the podium and speak, please?
Please state your name for the record, please.
My name's John Wolf, Dr. John Wolf. I live in the Mountain Cove part here. Just weren't able to still plan for the chicken factory near there.
Okay. I'll let Robert answer this since he's in charge of our economic development.
Sure. There's, I think, did you come to the meeting several months ago where we talked about this? Nothing has changed from that moment till today at all.
So no yes or no about it?
That's correct. There is no change whatsoever.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions or comments they'd like to bring to us at this time? It's open forum. Okay. Well, we appreciate all of y'all coming and taking part of your local government. Appreciate your time and have a safe travel and we'll see you back in two weeks. Good evening.
Thank you.